Really?
Well, you know, by the time it gets copied and turned into PDF, it really matters.
Thank you.
I feel like we should be sharing this more. We should be sharing this more.
That's a new word. If I saw that, then I'd assume he hadn't talked about what I saw as well.
Yeah.
Nope. It is. We made that change a couple of months ago. Yep. All right, go ahead and call our Tuesday, September twenty-third council meeting to order. If you would, please rise and join us for a prayer and a pledge.
Please bow your heads with me. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to join tonight to represent this community and to discuss the good and the progress that comes within our community. Lord, we just thank you for your hedge of protection around our community recently, and we just ask that you continue to be with with our country at large and with everyone affected by recent events. Lord, we just ask that you continue to help us to hold dear to you and to your provisions and your guidance and comfort each day. Lord, we just ask that you be in this meeting this evening, that you be with these council members who have graciously volunteered their time, their efforts, and and every decision that they make. We just ask that you help them to have the wisdom that you would give them and just help them to make decisions that positively affect this community. Lord, we just ask that you be with each of us tonight as we travel home after the meeting and just help us to arrive home safely. Lead us and guide us and forgive us where we fail you. We say all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Chairman Proten Lewis.
Here.
Councilwoman Knopfner.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
And Councilman Blais.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I will move into public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each citizen is limited to three minutes, and the council will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of city business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Aiden.
Hello, council.
Hello.
I am back, but this time I came prepared with the if there was an email communication issue.
Okay.
And I got the folder for a for physical copies of the flag this time.
Okay.
And would you like to take a look?
Sure.
I got all five. I got five copies.
All right, thank you. So we have that slated for the agenda on, which would be the next one, which would be October fourteenth?
Yes.
Think? So that discussion item will be on the agenda next time.
Okay.
So the way this will work is the council will have a discussion if they want to move forward with this, or if they have some changes, or if they decide, you know, we want to go a different direction or whatever. Um, we'll have that discussion, and then once we have a discussion and a decision, that's when it'll go to a vote after that. So make sure you're here for the next one will be we'll have it on the agenda, and it'll be a discussion topic for all council. I'm gonna go ahead and pass this out to them so they can see it.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll have it we'll have it next time. Does that sound good?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you for bringing physical copies. So that helps everybody get a look at it. All right, no further public comment. We'll move into council forum. Chairman Proten.
Yeah, so attended MML, had a had a great um time with staff and with all the speakers there. Um, you know, after the fourth and fifth time you go, and some of you guys can can relate, you start to recognize so many more people and and you um. It's just amazing how many people I feel like I know now when I go and had a lot of great conversations with different city uh workers from, you know, whether they were council or or staff uh from from many towns. And I really had a felt like I I left with a lot of contacts and um great conversation. So anyway, um, all that said, it was it was a great time and and um that was that's really all all a update I had. I did field some, I wouldn't call them complaints, I'd say concerns over uh some of some road repair um items, but I think those are in process of being worked on and completed. So um we were uh just, I would say they're concerns more than complaints at this moment, but uh want if they're watching, wanted them to know that I I did uh talk about that, so.
Jump in there. Either way.
It's okay. MML, me as well, same thing. Really had a good time, good bonding experience with everybody, and I wanted to thank Carrie and her staff for the streetlights downtown that are back on. Thank you very much.
That's great. That's great. Uh, the only thing I have to report is you all know that I'm on the solid waste board, which is basically trying to keep things out of the landfill. And as I continue to go to the recycling center about twice a week to take things over there, I'm continually met by people from Aurora. And I'm greeted by, Aurora should have something as good as this. So I am working on a plan to bring to council to see what we can get done, because it's grant writing season, and hopefully we can get some money to help it move forward.
Great.
I have nothing to report.
All right, I uh attended the EAP stakeholder meeting, um, so that was that was good. We had great representation from the city, and we had representation from Mercy, uh Spire, Lawrence County Emergency Management, and I can't remember everybody else, but a good group of people there to to put a plan together. So I think our next meeting is in October, I believe, so hopefully we'll see something out of that. Uh, park board did not unfortunately have a quorum this time, so there was no whether there was a meeting, but it was was uh closed about five minutes in. And then, of course, attended MML as well, and thank you to staff and council for taking time away from families and work. And it's a it seems like a long event and uh but it was it went pretty fast once we got going, so appreciate you guys for for going. Uh, we'll move into consent agenda. This will be for the approval of minutes on city council regular session session minutes on September ninth and September twenty twenty-five appropriations.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Motion is second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, move no old business, so we'll move into new business, eight dot one ADP updates. We have a representative of ADP that's gonna head this off. All right. Come on up.
Vivian is gonna speak first on behalf of ADP.
Okay.
Great. Good to see you, Vivian.
Pardon me?
I said, good to see you.
Thank you as well. Thanks. Um, I was given the opportunity to speak before the council as someone who has recently opened a new business in downtown Aurora. My name is Vivian Bruner, and I was born and raised here in the fifties and sixties when Aurora had a thriving downtown. When I have lunch with the old dogs, as we former classmates sometimes call ourselves, we often would discuss how lucky we felt to have grown up here during that time and wished that today's youth could experience the same small town downtown that we enjoyed. So when I decided to pursue a way to give back to the community that had been so good to me, I began to seek information about the options that might be available. Not having lived here in fifty-plus years, I really didn't have my finger on the pulse of the business community overall. I met with Shannon at the chamber, who was very helpful and has continued to be supportive. I also met with one of the chamber committees to get input from them. And then I started attending the Aurora Downtown Project board meetings and pop in to various committee meetings of the Aurora Downtown Project. What I found at those board meetings was a group of people who were very welcoming, encouraging, and willing to share information to be helpful for me to make a decision. What I quickly learned was that they were fully committed not to just making the downtown better, but also the community at large. Without exception, they are smart, but willing to learn, make changes when needed, and build on the foundations they've put in place. The support they showed me before opening the store has continued in many ways. On a practical note, they have not only attended my openings or come to wish me well when they couldn't, but also sent shoppers to check out the store and share Facebook Facebook posts. My day my workdays always start best when I turn down Madison and hear Peggy shout hello to me. They support the community by fundraising and grant writing for improvements and projects as a part of their long-range plans. I have had shoppers in my store who have told me they stopped in Aurora because of the Aurora Downtown billboard on the way to town from the east. In this day of social media and scrolling the internet, I truly believe we are seeking a bit of nostalgia and real connection to community. I see it in my shop every day, folks running into people and taking the time to visit, striking up conversations with strangers, customers sharing stories and memories of times gone by. I had a couple who came in last week because they happened to see a lot of cars parked on Madison and stopped to see what was going on. They said they hadn't seen that many cars downtown in a very long time. While opening a business in Aurora has been something I've felt led to do for thirty-plus years, and while I have been so grateful for the practical and overall support of the Aurora Downtown Project and others, what really was the tipping point that convinced me to give it a go was three things that are very important to me. Commitment, a sense of community, and the importance of connection. The members of the Aurora Downtown Project without fail have all three of those in spades.
Thank you.
We wanted to be able to give you an outside perspective of someone who's been to a lot of our things, but isn't necessarily on our board, um, in hopes that that kind of gives you a better understanding of who we are. Um, good evening, I'm here on behalf of Aurora Downtown Project, and first I want to thank you. Two years ago, you believed in our vision, voted that Aurora could become a Main Street community. The investment has truly paid off, and I'm excited to share with you just a few results that we've seen in the two years. We've invested in the look and the feel of downtown through the Flower Pot Project, adding new planners, refreshing the old ones, and cleanup days to keep our district welcoming. We've also uh been excited for the new murals, as well as in the enhancements like the paw prints and upcoming partially funded projects like the pop-up park and archway design. We've created and grown vents that bring people downtown and keep momentum going. Farmer Market Friday is now a fixture. Our annual golf tournament has doubled the impact, raising nearly eight thousand dollars this year, and we've continued to grow our community Christmas celebration. The Veterans Ban and Program grew even more this past year, and that's a huge honor for our community. Through the USDA grant, we partnered with branding, economic vitality, and architecture consultants who gave us invaluable data and visuals for downtown improvements. We've also hosted trainings, luncheons for small businesses, and partnered with the Missouri Small Business Development for a conference. And thanks to the grant-writing efforts, donor drives, and fundraising through shirts, banners, and events, we've shown that we can raise money and build sustainability all on our own. In just the last few years, we've welcomed businesses like the Front Porch, Trendy Resale, and Winston's, and we've seen reinvestments in longtime businesses, renovations like One Seventeen South Madison, and even more businesses preparing to move downtown. These are all not directly our projects, but we do believe that our work is creating momentum that encourages this investment, as well as a sale tax increase to our city as a whole this last year. We've placed a billboard on Highway sixty, and we've already heard directly from people who've visited downtown because of it. And finally, I want to recognize our ongoing partnership with the spit city, especially through our guidance that we've received through Carrie. Every step we have taken has been stronger because of our collaboration. So two years ago, you took a leap on faith by trusting us with this Main Street initiative. Today, we can point to flower pots, murals, new businesses, full veterans banners, a growing farmer's market, and thousands of dollars we've raised, proof that our downtown in Aurora is on the move. We would like to thank you and ask your trust to consider the partnership amount and fifteen thousand dollars annually to our organization. This proposal would be on your twenty twenty-six budget. And then also I put this flyer together and on the side over here, I think is probably the most important stuff. It's just numbers uh reflected of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, um, things that we have accomplished, whether it be volunteers, money we've raised, new businesses, and foot traffic. Any questions?
Question, guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand annually, what does that go towards? Is this the, I think originally it was um kind of a partnership with a grant for the Main Street? Help explain that, refresh my memory.
Yeah.
It's been a bit.
Well, so that's actually done now, so like we'll be done in November with our two-year partnership. So this fifteen thousand would boost our organization and continue to build it for a long-term sustainability, so it could go to a number of projects.
So it's just op be like operational funds to the bottom line?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, directly back into the downtown, but yes.
And are we maintaining this, is it called a membership with Missouri Main Street?
Correct.
Is it, and we maintaining that?
Mm-hmm. Every year we pay a due.
What's the?
What's the cost?
I I don't know on that a hundred percent. I actually just emailed Ben this week. I said, hey, we're coming up on the two years, what's the next step? I just know that that is a part of it, but because we've not been there, does anyone know the actual cost of it annually? No.
Okay.
There's also a difference between just being a participating community and becoming an accredited community, and there's some differences in cost on that dependent on how you started your grant program. So I think that may be something that they don't, there's not a solid answer till we determine if we're gonna have enough capacity to be accredited or just a participating community moving forward.
Okay.
So that's some answers I don't think they have yet to really know that.
What would be the advantage of being accredited?
Um, basically, you kind of get some ongoing assistance through the Main Street program, so wherein if you're just a participating community, you kind of have the hat to wear and the historical value and um kind of some reach-out guidance. But if you're accredited, then it gives you kind of a a leg up as you can still go to them for certain things. You're still participating for grant funding and different opportunities that are kind of a different level up.
A level of support, added level of support.
Yeah. Level of support from them and continued guidance from them is a little more amped up as an accredited community, I believe.
Gotcha. What other?
Go ahead. No.
What other costs do you, outside of that annual membership?
Annually?
What what other costs?
Uh, to be a partnership with them, you also have to attend their conference every year, so I think that would be our main annual. Yeah, so there's like those things that we attend um for training, and of course, I mean, that's very important, but uh those things they require for us to be a part of their um communities. And so that is an annual cost. And then the things that, I mean, when we do our budget that we annually factor is just the events and things that we put on, you know, this much money, those types of things.
I was just, if you if we didn't know what what that amount was, where where did we get fifteen thousand? What what's that number made up of?
Yeah.
What's the the thought with that fifteen to to use?
I can help with that a little.
Yeah.
Um, so based on my conversations with Main Street, so I one of the seminars I went to in Branson with Peggy, um, it had to be a city representative and a board member at that seminar. And at that seminar, we learned that the majority of the municipalities that do continue to participate after the two-year community empowerment grant still put into that on a financial level. And so really what Main Street describes that as is you just pick a place to start in hopes that as you grow your Main Street, then they're able to stand on their own two feet down the road and have an executive director employed that would kind of take over some of that that either the board is currently carrying or the city is currently carrying in terms of guidance. So that's kind of something that Main Street threw out to me as the city representative of that seminar, is that you want to try to start thinking about, once that collapses, does the city still want to be a partner? So Peggy and I learned that and brought it back to the board, and I think it's just a starting number, because that's where a lot of the communities started. There are some cities that invest over a hundred thousand, and we're not that size of community, obviously, and um not there yet, but it's just kind of a number that they throw out to start with to cities.
I was gonna ask you, I I've taken several notes as you spoke, but what are your goals for two thousand and twenty-six?
Yeah, really, the two pictures on here, I would say, are our main things, aside from the ongoing things that we always do, like the veterans banners and community Christmas. Um, is we're working on this uh Pocket Park. Now, phase one, we have the funds to complete that, which will be doing benches and things down there. Um, we're waiting on some specs to come in on the sunshades, but we've got about eight thousand dollars already raised for that, and we're looking for a total, if we did everything we want, it would be closer to twenty, but really, I think we're thinking fifteen. And then the next would be uh this archway sign.
Okay.
And again, that total cost, we are waiting for specs as well. We're hoping to work here locally with an engineer to provide those.
Your Pocket Park, is that on the north part of Madison then, where the building or over here where the Radio Shack building?
Correct.
Radio Shack?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Yeah.
Wonderful job. You guys' group is amazing, and there's been so many tangible um things come out of out of you guys' group. It's it's great. Um, would would I don't know how you guys are governed, like internally, would you be able to share with us, um, you know, at some point, kind of a breakdown of of these fundraisers and what you're spending the money on and how how that looks? Um, you know, maybe maybe there'd be a discussion from us to around that fifteen and maybe, you know, there may be leeway there or one way or the other, but I think for me, if I'm wanting to approve fifteen thousand dollars annually, I would want to see, you know, some.
A budget.
Some.
Yeah. Yeah.
Expenses and what we've done with the fundraising that we've raised and that kind of thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and we'll be working on our uh next year's budget, which this is really what would play into that um here and within the next uh month to two months. So yeah, we can absolutely provide those, but we can provide this previous uh year as well. Yeah.
I know you said that, you know, Shannon has been instrumental with everything, and Vivian said the same thing.
Yes.
Have you worked with any other entities to collaborate with events that you're holding?
Uh, well, Shannon has been a great resource, and she got us connected with the um Missouri Small Bizin Business Division, I guess is what you would call it.
Correct.
And that's how we hosted the seminar out there at the Rec Center. So we've worked with them as far as uh maybe locally, I mean, Project Rise volunteers with us um every year for our Christmas event. Other, huh, the Parks Department, we've also worked with.
State Historic Preservation.
State Historic Preservation.
And Missouri Economic Development.
And Missouri Economic Development.
Okay.
We all have different moving parts, so you know, I I've got to look to them too.
I guess, I mean, that's fantastic you're reaching out, but I guess I was looking at, you know, and you said that, working with local people, because it seems like, you know, there's so much effort that goes into it, and if the Parks is trying to do something, and you're trying to do something at the same location, but maybe a couple weeks apart, it seems sense to work together.
We did collaborate over the fourth.
Okay.
So they had the um hydrant, or they had, so the library had the parade. They, we did snow cones, and they did the hydrant party that day, as well as the Farmer's Market Friday, we partnered up with the hydrant party on two.
Great.
Yes, so yes, we're trying to do things with local organizations.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Any further questions, council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to eight dot two, good neighbor proclamation. I have some reading to do.
Council Shannon, um, before you start your reading.
Yeah.
She and I discussed this today, so as you know, I said, is the city's representative on the Missouri Extension Council uh commis council on the Missouri University of Missouri Extension Council, I'll get it right. Um, but Shannon has been working with them a lot lately, and so Shannon is actually the one that approached me. I was aware of this through the Extension Council, but Shannon approached me about this and kind of has some extra info. I think she was kind of gonna share with you to give you a little more detail tonight. So I just wanted to let you know that before or after you read it, Shannon does want to share a little.
You got uh you got voluntold. Go ahead, nope. Come on up.
So I know that y'all have looked at the Shannon Walker, Aurora Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, thanks for having me. That is what I'm passing out to y'all is um the flyer that David Burton, who was instrumental in bringing this um proclamation, this 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 whole good neighbor week thing um to us. I'd seen it for a couple years, but I didn't know enough information, so he and I got to talking a couple months ago, and I said, you know, there's so many good things that go on in Aurora, and we don't really get to toot our own horn very much. We do it amongst each other, and we are patting each other on the back, supporting each other, but there's so many things that people in the state of Missouri have no idea what we're doing. So that's where the good neighbor program comes in. Um, you can kind of do it in a lot of different directions. You can truly do it as, um, hey, I want to call out my neighbor, I was sick, they brought my trash can in, I'm gonna nominate them for, you know, hey, thanks for being a good neighbor. Um, part of this came out of a some information that was has been gathered over the years and how we have, as a society, have lost our sense of neighbor. How many of us do know our neighbors? You know, I'm lucky, I live in a really good neighborhood, so I know my neighbors, but there's a lot of people who have no idea who their neighbors are. Um, and over the years, that's where this has become, we've become very social media heavy, but this is trying to get us back to remembering that your neighbors, not just in your neighborhood, but those that you work with. You know, when David and I were talking about this, um, I would, because my focus is business, so I'm like, can we do this as a good neighbor with businesses? You know, we have the we have the new businesses in our downtown area, and they're all becoming friends, they're neighbors. So he's like, absolutely, so we can actually nominate the other businesses that, hey, you know, Winston's was super welcoming to the front porch, and this is what they helped us do, you know, I needed a planner moved or whatever. Um, and then they're really big on doing things in neighborhoods, and we're al already doing it. I know the Downtown Project has a cleanup day coming up, October twenty-fifth, so I want to nominate them. You know, that, hey, they are putting into their neighborhood in our downtown. That's where everyone else comes in. I have links that not only the chamber, not only you guys, not only them, but everyone, if we can get them to start nominating, you know, businesses and folks in our community, we'll start getting some more recognition. So and it's a nice partnership with Missouri Extension, so um.
In doing that, you're saying recognizing your neighbor, different areas of town, would you would need to like divide up the town?
No, I don't think so.
Blocks or anything?
I don't think so, but it might be something that we can, because it literally starts next week, and we're kind of new to this. So the the week is um the twenty-eighth through October fourth, but I'd like to run it all year long. So it might be one of those things in the spring that we say, hey, who's gonna have the best block party?
Yeah.
You know, who's gonna do this and who's gonna do that? Because there are so many ideas that have come out of this program over the last few years. Some some neighborhoods literally have like a popsicle party. Come to my driveway between five thirty and six and have a popsicle and meet your neighbor. So there's so many different things that can be done, and I think we can run with it, make it our own, so. You guys have any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you, Shannon.
Welcome.
All right. Mr. Rogers once reminded us, imagine what our real neighborhoods would look like if each of us offered just one kind word to another person. And whereas, too often being a good neighbor is mistakenly defined as simply being quiet and keeping to ourselves, even though research shows that genuine connection with our neighbors creates stronger, safer, and more vibrant communities. And whereas, studies reveal that most Americans do not know the names of their neighbors and have little meaningful interaction with them despite overwhelming evidence that nearby friendships can reduce crime, strengthen local leadership, improve emergency readiness, and foster inclusive communities where everyone belongs. And whereas, new national and local research warns of an epidemic of loneliness and social isolation, which can lead to depression, anxiety, and even shorter life expectancy. Yet intentional acts of neighboring can reverse those trends, improving mental health, increasing happiness, and deepening community pride. And whereas, neighboring is not just about helping others, it is also about gratitude for those who live nearest us, about the give and take of kindness, and about building the kind of connected neighborhoods we want to call home. And whereas, the Missouri Legislature, with the governor's signature in twenty twenty-two, officially established September twenty-eighth to October fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as Missouri Good Neighbor Week to encourage acts of kindness, generosity, and connection. And whereas, this annual celebration is organized statewide by University of Missouri Extension and the Hopeful Neighborhood Project, challenging Missourians to com to complete and report thousands of intentional acts of neighboring. Now therefore, I, Tony Kennedy, mayor of the city of Aurora, do recognize the week of September eighth through October Now therefore, I, Tony Kennedy, Mayor of the City of Aurora, do recognize the week of September eighth through October twenty, October fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as Good Neighbor Week in the City of Aurora, Missouri, and encourage all residents to take part in the Acts of Neighboring Challenge by taking the time to know, appreciate and serve their neighbors. You want to take a picture?
No, your partners, remember?
All right, eight dot three, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-five, animal microchipping fees.
Council, just to give you a little bit of background, these next three ordinances are all related to some of our animal, animal control topics and fees. Just to kind of set the stage, Wes is going to talk to you about each of these to kind of give you a little bit of information about each of them individually. But the reason for this, just want to let you know that we've had some external funding for several years for the spay and neuter program that we are no longer going to have moving forward. And so we are looking at ways budgetarily that we can try to make up for that, how we can make this program continue to be successful. And we do have city staff, Annie is able to do microchipping. She is trained to do so. And so we're looking at ways to better serve the animal population within the community as well as ways to make sure that we can continue that program the way it is with the lack of funding from the outside source. So that's part of the reason for these coming at you and in the timely fashion that they did kind of quickly. And Wes will talk to you about each of them individually.
All right, Chief.
Thank you all. First of all, this is not a new conversation. This has been a conversation I've been having over the course of a couple of years that our fees for things were just woefully, did not cover even a fraction of the cost of what the city had to put in for it. And then as you mentioned, some, we were spoiled by a local business with some funding that is going to be ending at the end of the year. And so we, we probably, we were already discussing changing some of these fees, but this was a good reason to just go ahead and, and try to do it. So on the first one, ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash three-three-five-five, animal microchipping fee. So you'll probably remember a year or so ago, I came to you and got us signed up with a thing called Shelter Love. Shelter Love is an adoption app that we adopt animals through. And so when a person wants to adopt an animal, they'll go in, do an adoption application and adopt the animal through the Shelter Love. Well Shelter Love has now offered us a price for obtaining microchips through their company. And so what that basically allows us to do is to microchip the animal prior to adoption. And that way, that, that way we can, we can track the animal later on. And so nominal fee of twenty bucks to, that will tack on to the adoption fee so that every animal we adopt out is micro, is microchipped. And so that's what that first one is for.
I have a question. Is the twenty dollars the actual price, like for the material, like the, that's what they, that the city's being charged for that?
That, that would includes a little bit of time for the, for the employee. It's a little, it fluctuates a little bit, but so far I think we can get the chip for under ten dollars.
I was gonna say, I'm surprised it's that cheap. That's what I meant. That's what it's going by.
It is more expensive elsewhere, but they are offering it to us at quite a discount so that we can do it without making our adoption fees too much, yeah.
Is there, is there a risk of that, call it funding of the discount, ending at some point and then raising, what would the, what would the non-discount price, do you know?
Right now, most places that are doing microchipping do it for about double what we're gonna charge for it, so forty, fifty bucks. And then depending on the company of the microchip, is dependent on what it costs to register the animal. And so some are, you know, a hundred and twenty bucks and that's a lifetime registration. Some are a little bit cheaper. Shelter Love is, is much cheaper. And so there's a little bit of cost associated with, once you register. So the microchip is one part and then the registering with the company so that when we wand the dog and we get a number, then we can look it up and determine that, that's a, that's a separate cost. But at least we will have record of the animal, the animal's microchip number and all of that locally. But if they choose to register it, that'll be something in addition. So that's a long way around saying, yes, this is going to be a significantly cheaper microchipping than what you would find elsewhere.
When you say that they choose to register, so we can track the number ourselves so that we know for administrative officers who's, the dog belongs to. If they want to do that, that's something on the adoptee.
So they would go back to Shelter Love and, and I, I believe right now, it doesn't cost them anything through Shelter Love. But if I, if you go and adopt a dog from somewhere else, then the dog, the puppy might come microchipped already. But then you have to register the microchip with the company that they have it. So the originator of the chip will have the number and so we will always be able to tell internally that animal from the Shelter Love. But then, or, or whatever company, but then to do a lifetime registration, there's usually some kind of a fee so that you get services like, you know, missing, you know, you can register your dog is missing or whatever. And then that puts out alerts and they, you know, there's a, there's some things you get with it once you register the pet with the, with the microchip company. There's probably a much better explanation for that out there than I just gave.
If the animal become missing in another jurisdiction that didn't have that in the database, if they didn't register, then they wouldn't know, yeah. Any further questions on that one, Council?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-five, animal microchipping fees.
Second.
Motion second, please vote. Thank you. Eight dot four, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-six, amending section two-ten dot two-ten.
Remind me.
Actual adoption policy.
Okay, so our adoption fee has, just like I said, has been very, very cheap. And so we wanted to build this microchipping in with the cost of the adoption. So it's still incredibly cheap, fifty dollars is what we're asking to raise it to. But that, that includes the twenty dollar fee for the microchipping and then some of the care and money that we invest in the animals, leading up to the time that we can adopt them. Because we have to feed them, you know, water them, take care of them possibly, you know, get veterinary care and things like that. So that just gets us closer to kind of re, you know, recollecting some of those costs that we're putting into the animal, but not making it so high that it's hard to adopt them out.
Long overdue. I will make a motion. We approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-six, amending section two-ten dot two-ten.
Second.
I have a motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot five, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-seven, amending section two-ten dot one-three-oh.
Redemption.
So we have a pickup fee of ten dollars when we pick up an animal. The ten dollars obviously doesn't even cover an hour of work by our animal control officers. Doesn't cover the cost of the animal possibly needing to be fed and water. Doesn't ca, doesn't cover the cost of, you know, the officer having to go and get the animal and then bringing it back and re, you know, releasing the animal back to the owner. And so what I looked at in other jurisdictions is that they have a step where it's a, it's, there's a, there's an amount for the first time we pick up your dog. And then there's an additional amount the second time we pick up the dog and then there's a, and a different amount the third and, and further time. And so those numbers are on there and I'm trying to remember, it's twenty dollars, I think, for the first one, fifty the second and a hundred the third and that, and that's that much thereafter. And really that, that'll, that'll help us recover some of our costs, but hopefully it will also deter, you know, maybe encourage people to get those fences fixed and get the, keep the dog confined as, you know, as much as possible that, so that we're not constantly picking up the same dog ten times in a year for ten dollars a pop. It becomes a little bit of a, of a more costly situation to let the dog not be confined. And this will also allow us to add vet cost. If we pick up a dog that's been hurt, attacked, got itself in, in trouble in some way, a lot of times we take them directly from picking them up to the veterinary to get them, to get them care. And then the person will come and pick up the dog. And what we've built into this is so that the city can re, can, can recover those veterinary costs if we pick up somebody's dog.
Council, just so you know, I worked with the city attorney for review on this one to ensure that it lines up with our animal control ordinances that come to the municipal court. And so it has been reviewed by legal counsel and approval was given.
Make a motion, accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-seven, amending section two-ten point one-three-zero.
Second.
Motion second, please vote. Eight dot six, special event application, ABT trunk or treat.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I come to you tonight, Aurora Baptist Temple did submit a special event application for their trunk or treat this year. Of course, the date is October thirty-first. Their setup time is five-thirty. Running time for the operation is from six to eight on the thirty-first. They should have it cleaned up and done and put back up by at least eight-thirty is what they're telling me. Of course, you know, this is something that they've done for eighteen years. I didn't realize that they'd been doing it for eighteen years, so that's quite a while. But I did talk to, to Wes this evening, because he was not at our staff meeting this morning, that they, they are not requesting police protection, but the police department does set somebody there and they pass out candy as well to kind of keep and manage, you know, traffic coming, you know, and people coming in and out. Two, with that, the fire department usually assists by extra lighting and everything. And so Greg, we talked about that in staff meeting as well this morning. The next thing, they didn't put that on here, but in our staff meeting this morning, it, we usually close Jefferson to Plum through there so the traffic can't come in and off Elliot Street and people coming through there. So just keep that in mind as well. Along with that, staff recommends approval for this event.
Was there any discussion about, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, we had some trouble with folks parking on the other side of Elliot and kind of playing Frogger to get to the event, right? And it was causing some.
And they did, I believe they included in their application this year that there would be no entry from Elliot and that they're going to try to manage that.
Correct.
And just to clarify, they want to close Plum from Jefferson to Elliot.
Yeah.
So they're not closing Jefferson.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve special event application, ABT trunk or treat.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot seven, special event application, O'Reilly Customer Appreciation Day.
Yep, so O'Reilly's submitted a special event application. It's for nine-twenty-five, which is this Thursday, I believe. They, they'll be setting up at Crosby Park about nine-thirty in the morning. The event is for, from eleven AM to three, three PM. And of course, they will have teardown. I called Travis this morning to make sure, after our staff meeting, to make sure that he was aware, because he was another one that wasn't at our meeting this morning. He was aware, he did know that they were, would be doing this event there. It is, you know, they're doing barbecue, they're doing hamburgers and hot dogs for the professional shops in town and people that, that use O'Reilly's. So they are asking to use Crosby Park. Staff recommends approval for this event.
I'll make a motion that we accept the special event application for the O'Reilly Customer Appreciation Day.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Council. All right, staff reports. City manager report.
Council, I just have three or four things this evening I wanted to highlight. Parks Department, we've had some ongoing conversations about water leaks within White Park and at the pool. All of those have been repaired and everything should be back on this week, if it's not already. So one of those water leaks has been a challenge for about two years and it ends up Travis's gut was right the whole time. And so they ended up finding it about where he thought it was and so they've gotten that fixed. Then I'm going to jump down to community development and public facilities. The City Hall Rehabilitation Project, we held that pre-construction meeting. Contractor will begin staging materials and equipment October thirteenth and they plan to begin construction October twentieth. Kind of in conjunction with that, the City Hall Roof Replacement is to be complete this week. They had one more day to go and then the rain hit today. So hopefully it dries up and they can get back here and get the final steps done on that. The fire alarm system upgrade here within the interior of City Hall is complete and they are out of the building now, so that all went well. And then I'm going to skip to, last thing I had departmentally. You guys, several of you mentioned the Missouri, Missouri Municipal League Conference. I just wanted to touch on that. We had eight staff members and three city council members that attended that last week. I just want to say thank you to the council members that did attend with us and all of the opportunities that we were given for learning and teamwork. And as a side note, each year we try to take an evening to step away from the conference, just as our core group, and do some kind of team building experience. This year, I had everybody do an escape room and I'm happy to say that the eleven of us were trapped in a room together and we escaped. So we can do teamwork at its best.
What was it, forty percent success rate on that one too?
Forty percent success rate in that escape room and the eleven, eleven of us managed to get out of there. So it was a fun thing, but I, I can't say enough about our team and about the team we create when we put this management team, the, all of our staff and the city council together. So appreciate the opportunities you give us for that and the learning that we were able to do last week.
When are we hosting MML?
October twenty-first at the Rec Center.
Okay, ten-twenty-one.
Yep.
All right.
And we will have, Kami will be, MML has been working with her to kind of get some final details worked out on that. So we discussed that at the management meeting this morning. And as soon as we get some of those things nailed down, she'll be reaching out to let you guys know all the final details on timing and catering and all that kind of stuff. Happy to answer any questions you have or anything I didn't cover in my report.
Probably questions, just a comment. Let everybody else get their questions that they have here. I forgot to mention it earlier, but I was, and I swear I heard somebody talk about this in regards to pigeons before. So if I, so if I did and it was you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to steal your thunder, but I was introduced to a company called Analytics from, I believe they're California based or USA based. They sell what they bill as birth control for pigeons. It is a special type of feed that only really works on pigeons, wrackles, I think, problem birds, right? It's pretty cheap and it's distributed through your basic old deer corn feeders. And I was wondering if we could reach out to them and maybe task somebody or challenge somebody with seeing how we could handle that. They're talking about for a city our size, maybe two spots and potentially maybe work with some of our current natural feeding areas to help. Their numbers are pretty significant. Now, this is all marketing material, but.
Sure.
There's a couple of case studies out there for towns our size that saw a significant decline with that. I don't know if that was you that brought that up maybe?
It's been a while, but yeah, it was kind of a, a multi-pronged approach and that was definitely one of them.
Yep.
Yep.
I was surprised at how cheap it was. It's like eight dollars a pound and the rates, they have a little Excel spreadsheet where you can put in your, you know, what you think your flock size is. And it's, it's not as much as I thought it would be to kind of throw that out there and.
Great. So that was in some of the original research that Aaron and I had put together when we were talking about different ways to try to tackle that. I'm not familiar with that company. So if you have contact information or can.
Yep, I'll, I'll shoot you an email.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's called OVO Control, OVO Control.
Okay, we'd be happy to look into that. And since you've brought that up, I will say, MML Conference, one of the positive things I brought back was a bird, I'm going to mess up her title. Missouri Department of Conservation has a lady by the name of Katie, whose title is Bird Something Preservation. And so I have got a conference call set up to discuss with her. There are four traps or cages. I'm going to be careful how I word that till I talk to her a little more. But speaking with them at MML, there are four units available to go within communities that assist with some of the pigeon control. units available to go within communities that assist with some of the pigeon control. It's specifically for that. It's funded federally and from the state level. She said typically those four boxes that they have are, somebody has them, but they have two available right now. And we're, I think, maybe going to be able to work with getting those two boxes in Aurora. And she's not going to let them commit to anybody else, I don't think, until I get to have another conversation with her. So, we are looking at several different avenues to try to start targeting that. And I have more than two business owners ready to have those planted on their roofs. Some of them still behind me tonight. So, but, so we are looking at that avenue too, and we're going to try to tackle it as many ways as we can.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was gonna say, I know we had some community members that were concerned about, we don't want to just kill them, we just want them to go away. This, this is not a poison. It's just a, the, the eggs won't hatch.
Right.
So, where do you release them?
I don't know exactly the details of that yet. I, I do know that it wouldn't always be, they wouldn't always remain living in this scenario. And that's just kind of the, you know, once they're trapped in a confined space and some of those kind of things. So, that's something that we'll need to visit about, you know. And the council kind of gave me some guidance on, I don't want to tell you, because I don't know for sure yet. But that's why I'm going to talk to her some more. She indicated this is a very positive way to go about it and that a lot of communities have done it. So, I definitely am going to gather that information and I'll bring it back to you. I feel like that's something we need to talk about as a team before we move forward on something like that, because I think there will be some public conversation about how we move forward on that.
Okay.
I do have one other thing. Sorry. Economic Development Report.
Yeah.
Is that, have we been getting that? Stop that?
No, we haven't been doing it since the transition to, really, that was something that was kind of a partnership. So, we've been trying to add some of that stuff into the City Manager Report. Aaron and I meet weekly before I do this. In terms of individual developments, we haven't had anything of volume enough, you know, moving recently to continue that. But we're happy to bring it back if you'd like to have it.
I wouldn't mind, it doesn't even have to be as inclusive as it used to be, maybe, but I wouldn't mind some update.
Sure.
New businesses in town?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Did you say new businesses? Like new businesses opening? So that actually comes from city clerk's office. So we, maybe we could combine a community development, business, merchant, that type of report and bring it to you. That one felt like it got a little heavy and long sometimes. So maybe instead of ongoing on each development, we could just give you highlights each two-week period and maybe combine that throughout some of that stuff.
Certain projects might warrant that continued update. Most don't, right?
Yeah.
But speaking of updates on projects, I would also like to get some regular updates on our, our software and that project. Doesn't have to be every meeting, but...
Sure.
Maybe once a month of kind of progression percentage-wise, kind of where we stand, roadblocks. Is it going well, is it not? You know, I mean...
I'm interested, but it may be a legal thing, I don't know, about updates of some of these dilapidated buildings. So, as far as I know, I don't know if that's in a legal or closed session or not, but, but I would like to get an update, you know, about some buildings that are especially downtown, you know, where we are with that.
Some of those will be, depending on where we are in certain situations, legal. But I can tell you now, one that you guys had recently asked about that I can share a little bit on in open session is the big two-story house over here across from Modern Variety has been sold to a developer that rehabilitated 121 West Pleasant.
Oh, great.
That was, that's recent, since the last, okay.
Yeah. That's Scott Hood.
Yeah. We're very excited about that. So, he'll be moving forward on that pretty quickly.
Great.
As for the other building that I think you're talking about...
The Wheeler's Buildings?
Yeah. We don't really have any new updates on that right now.
Okay.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah.
Anything more for...
No, sir.
All right. I will make a motion and move into closed session pursuant to RSMO 610.021 for Items 1.
A second, a motion.
A motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Chairman Quatton Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Monocle?
Yes.
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 You are in close session.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.